The Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I would remind you to silence your cellphone. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And Carol is in the front here if you need help with a listening device. That will go on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting minutes of April 19, 2016.
Move to approve with a recommendation change.
Second.
And a second with a change.
On the compromise, you showed that the first, the initial motion was passed, but that really didn't happen until at the end. Look at the last three sentences on resolution, whatever, a lien compromise. Well, actually, the last four or five lines.
The motion-
See, a motion by Bender, second, bending at a compromise and release, twenty-four, five ninety-four, and thirty-one oh eight-eight upon full payment. Wait a minute, let's see. With no payment. Says five ayes, but that, we did not act on that.
No, that was the first one that we did.
But we didn't pass it.
Yeah, we passed the first one, and then we went to the second one. And then we dealt with the second one separately. Remember, there was, there was a, there was a woman and a man, and they had them stay.
Okay, that was a six hundred dollar one, the compromise full. And then we went, okay, okay, my mistake.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, I mean, excuse me, to approve the minutes. Do we have to change that motion? I'll, I'll make amended a motion to approve the minutes with no change. Okay, I have a, okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes without any change, and that's an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
We didn't get a second on the amendment.
It was Dick.
Oh, he did? Okay, I can hear him.
Now, the amended original motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We have passed the minutes. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of eight hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kelly.
I'm gonna screw this one up.
Yeah.
On the bottom of the first page, there's a court systems records keeper for the date of thirty sixteen. It says for twenty-three forty-seven. Beginning of the next page, same thing, again, with a different sequence number. Carol, do you have any idea what?
Those are both for storing records. I know that-
I know, but are they two different months, or?
But they have a different sequence number.
You have a different sequence number.
They're both dated three sixteen. That's what's got me confused.
I'm not certain what the, why that is split up like that, but I could certainly find out. If you'd want to delay or pull that from the bills until later on, we could certainly do that.
Can we do that?
Make a motion to amend and withhold payment on those two items, but approve the rest.
Okay, I have a motion to amend to pull two items which are record storage on three sixteen, and then to approve the rest of the bills. Is there a motion? I think there was a motion. I'll make, I'll make a second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That was an amended motion, so now we need to vote on the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
And Chair, if I may. So now we're gonna vote on approving all the rest of the bills, and I just wanted to make a comment about a couple of them.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Barrett.
One is that this week, we've got two-hundred-and-three thousand going in, to the state, which those numbers normally have been like three million, but apparently we're, it's a smaller amount at this time, but that's the same category of tax money collected by the treasurer that we're remitting to the state. Additionally, we have about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for armor correctional health, which does the healthcare in our jail. So if we took off those two, two bills, we'd be more like four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is a presentation of the two thousand fifteen annual report for the Minnehaha County Office of Public Advocates. And we don't have anybody here to give the report, but the report is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personal actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement. Pam Nelson. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning. We have five elderly assessment freezes today on the agenda. One is record ID seven oh seven four six for one thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Two is record ID five three oh six three for eighty-five dollars and ten cents. And three would be for record ID four three nine six five for six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. Four would be for record ID four one, two one oh three for six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. And five would be record ID three six four zero zero for one hundred and five dollars and seventy-three cents.
There any questions for Pam?
Make a motion to approve those five items, those five freezes.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. DP and O, number eight two four zero zero, in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Carol Martin? Carol, are you presenting on this one?
Oh, I can-
Or Kirsten, do we want?
I can do that, too.
Okay, Kirsten, you wanna present on that?
Yep. Thank you, Commissioners. It came to the Commission Office's attention, as well as the State's Attorney's Office's attention, that a lien had been placed in, against a staff member, actually, at one of our medical service providers in connection with a petition on a civil commitment. Of course, that is not allowed under the law. It was brought to our attention. We don't have a full application in this case, because it's my advice to you that this lien is not supported in the law, and I would recommend today that that lien be removed from this person's record without any payment. It's basically an error in recording the lien against the wrong person.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions?
Yeah, quite.
Commissioner Kelly.
I'm curious as to how this ever happened. I assume that, it looked to me, looking through it, that it goes through the auditor's office, and then, and then the lien is placed there.
Correct. I, I can explain a little bit of the process and how that works. Under our law, there's a difference in how these expenses are treated based on who the petitioner is. In this case, a medical provider was the petitioner, not a family member. I believe it was an error in the auditor's office in determining whether the petitioner, in this case, was a family member or not. In this case, it wasn't. Therefore, that lien for attorney expenses for the petitioner shouldn't have been imposed against the medical service provider. It is in some cases, depending on who the petitioner is in a particular case.
But normally, a medical provider would not be the petitioner. Is that-
Hmm, it, it happens. I mean, police officers can be, medical service providers can be.
And they can have a lien put against them?
No, this was an error.
Oh.
Yeah, because it's not in the class of that type of person who, it's allowed to be placed under statute. It's just the way state statute reads.
Well, I think at the least, we oughta, there ought to be a letter of apology going out this person. I didn't, it, these things dirty a record. And, and I, I guess I just, I think it's really unfortunate.
Robert has talked to her to keep that good communication. I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien. All those in favor-
Ben, Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
I just want to comment that I, for a long time, really have not liked the idea of billing family members for trying to care for their family member. In other words, you know, if, if I were to turn in Gerald for alcohol treatment or whatever, I don't get a bill. But when my wife turns me in for it, she gets the bill. And yet, I don't know Gerald well enough to be sure about his habits, whereas my wife actually might be-
We continue to sit here, and you'll get to a lot more.
Anyway, I, I don't think it's fair that we bill family members for caring for their family member. There's a process. People are not just thrown into, into treatment without a process to determine if that's required. I mean, it's, isn't that right, Kirsten? I mean, there's a process before you're sent for treatment or whatever that potentially you're, they would find out that my wife was completely wrong.
No, right. I mean, there, there's due process in, in the form of civil commitment proceedings. There's a whole chapter of it in the law.
And yet, who would be more familiar with the person than a family member? And, you know, we need people to go to treatment before they harm somebody or themselves.
I have a motion and a second on DP and O, number eight two four zero zero. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. This is a time for public comment. If you have to say some, would like to say something that is not on the agenda, and I would, so, yeah, we have some city council people, newly elected city council people, that would like to introduce themselves.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Greg Nitzer. I'm the city councillor-elect for the Northwest District of Sioux Falls. I'm replacing the term-limited Dean Karski, who I see here in the audience. I wanted to come here to introduce myself and tell you that I look forward to working with you. Cooperation with the county and other governmental bodies is really important to me. Minnehaha County is particularly important to me because I live in the county, and so, and so do all of my future constituents. As I was going door-to-door, I had a number of citizens share with me their concerns about the county and its financial health. Their concerns echo my concerns. I see mandates being piled on you from the state without necessarily the matching funding to fulfill those mandates. I see you struggling with the costs of the court system, which you are responsible for. I see the city blessed with record revenue, which puts us in a position to spend millions on quality of life items, while the county struggles to figure out how it's going to build something as basic as a jail. I see the city having countless revenue streams and levers we can pull to generate more revenue, while the county has very few levers it can, it can pull to find more revenue. I'm concerned that taxes and other revenues may not be allocated properly between the governmental bodies. For example, perhaps the county should get a bigger cut of certain revenues. I want to ensure that as a city and as a, as a city council, that we don't have an us-versus-them mentality. I want to make sure the lines of communication are truly open. The city and the county do cooperate in certain areas, which has been a win for both sides and the taxpayers and the citizens. Two examples: the library system and our health department. We need to find more opportunities to collaborate, not just because it makes sense, but because it will save tax dollars by eliminating duplication and capturing economies of scale. Places where I see opportunities: planning, zoning, GIS, sharing building space, and I'm sure there are many others. By the way, my idea of collaboration is not us as a city coming up with an idea and then asking if you want to jump on board at the end, essentially presenting you a take-it-or-leave-it proposition. If that is happening, or has happened, it's unfortunate and it's wrong. I'm particularly concerned about the administrative building proposal and the recent GIS pictometry issue and how each has proceeded. In closing, I will always keep in mind that I and all of the citizens of the Northwest District are also citizens of this county. Your prosperity is our prosperity. Your struggle is our struggle. I want to learn more and figure out how we can work together on these issues and many others going forward. I've been watching county commission meetings for quite some time. I've learned quite a bit, but I have a lot more to learn. I look forward to learning more about the county, its operations, your challenges, where we can work together to benefit all sides and save taxpayer dollars. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Another one?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pat Starr. I live in the Northeast District. I'm the councillor-elect for the Northeast District. I'll be replacing Kenny Anderson, Jr., in that district. So I look forward, as well as Greg. We thought it was important for the four of us today to come and address you and start that spirit of cooperation that is so important between units of government, both in our county and as well as Lincoln County. We look forward to watching you participate as a group. I'm glad that the county and the city are getting together for the first time in several months and actually add some agenda items and that spirit of cooperation that continues. So, again, thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Staley, and I am replacing Kermit Stagers for the at-large city council position. And I, I have a love for the county. I've been down here for the last ten years doing petition drives, standing in front of this building, which I, is dear to my heart. I've had fabulous encounters with the people. I call this the marketplace of the city. The heartbeat of the city is right here. And so I am committed, I said this before I was elected, but I'm committed to helping to keep communication open, to doing whatever we can to share our resources, because we're in this together. We're all citizens, and I agree, echoing what, what has been said already. We need to find ways to share resources so that we, we come up with the best plan for our people. Financially, and as service-wise, keeping taxes and fees low, I'm committed to that. But I think we can find ways to really make something happen for our community. And I think you've got an exciting group of people coming onto the council. You're gonna see wonderful things happening.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Marshall Selberg. I'm the council member-elect from the Southwest District. I prepared no official remarks. I don't know if I can say anything any better than it's been said. I just wanted to stop in and say hello, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. And I guess you probably have all heard that we do have a five o'clock city council meeting, and so you're welcome to come and sit in the audience, and it won't be real long. So, thank you for coming. Good morning.
Good morning. Robert Colby, County Commissioner Emeritus. As was Jim's weep and Carol tweet. I figured after you put in twenty years, you can tack that on the tail end. You may not be aware that many years ago, and this is in the forty-year range, before the city had the sales tax, the second, the penny sales tax and the second penny, the city used to come to the county and borrow money to finish out their fiscal year. That doesn't happen anymore. The roles have been reversed. When I first went on the commission, we thought it was a good idea to get together with the counterparts on the other side. The city-county would get together and have coffee. That was in the tail end of the days of Lwai La hunking, so that tells you how far back it goes. We used to meet down in the Black Watch, where Dick Kelly showed his, what would you call it? Commitment to the community by giving up the, that area to the city. And instead of becoming a millionaire, he decided to run for politics. The city and the county would get together, and it was just, it was informal. It was getting to know the people on the other side. After a while, we decided that maybe we ought to involve some other people, and we did invite the school board, elected officials. We would meet, we moved from the Black Watch down to the area where they prepare the meals for the school district. That was the second floor. It was over south of the T. Denny Sanford Monolith over there. And we met there regularly. And it was, it wasn't social, but you'd get together, and you would say, this is what's happening in our part of the world. What's happening in yours? And there would be a report from the city, from the county, and from the school board, and it worked quite well. After a while, we decided to go down to the Washington Pavilion and have rolls and coffee. And then once in a while, we'd throw in a, a report or a, an emphasis. We'd have the sheriff come in and speak, or we had, we had some concern that was, for all of us, something we wanted to know more about. That worked quite well, because you got to know the other people who were elected, and you had a, an idea of the kind of trust level that you could put in them. We never did get the mayor. The mayors were always thought that they were above us. So the county and this, got together and said, okay, we'll have the, the chairperson of the county would have breakfast once a month with the mayor, and the county commission would put together a list of things we wanted to address and say, could you aid and bet us on this? This is what we're doing, so that the mayor would be informed. Having been chair several times, some mayors were easier to work with than others. There was one that, when you got together, it was kind of like pulling them back and tacking the balloon down, so it didn't float away. You learn that sometimes, in certain areas, it's the tail that wags the dog, that it's the bureaucrats that give the elected officials an agenda on what they are to do, instead of the elected officials making a decision and saying, this is what we want to have happen, and we want to make sure the community knows about it. There was a city councillor who said, well, this is not important, and I don't think we need to have this. That person was defeated in election. Because it didn't have cameras, they weren't the center of attention, and so getting together for a breakfast, or a rolls and coffee, and talking about what you were doing in your entity was not of any importance. As with many conventions, a lot of the important things don't happen in the seminars, the meeting centers. It's what happens in the hallway, because if I want to talk to Ms. Bender, to Commissioner Bender, I can talk to, and we can interact and find out what's going on. If I want to talk to Commissioner Barth, I have a chance to do this on a regular basis. Even if, even if there is no formal agenda, you at least get to know, and you can prevent such things as when, when Mr. Kelly, Commissioner Kelly now, was on the city council and tried to fire a county employee. Those things just don't make for good relations. So, if you're, which is fortuitous, because I was going to give a little bit of the history, that you have an opportunity. Don't forsake the opportunity of getting together with your elected counterparts, because what's happens on the other side of this podium is not always privy to the people who are on this side of the podium. You have information, and disinformation can be dispelled by talking to the people who are the elected school board members, the elected city councillors, and the county commissioners. Don't forsake that opportunity. There are, there's a little blame that can go both ways. Sometimes the city in the past has had a, an effete attitude, and I remembered they did that with the Lincoln County Commissioners, kept working and trying to tell them what to do. They found out it didn't work too well with Minnehaha County. But it's a game of horses pulling together, not one being superior, because each of the elected entities have their job to do, but they need the assistance of the others that are elected to their counterparts, whether it's school, city, or county. Sometimes it gets a little cumbersome when you have the school boards come in from some of the other school districts in the county, because then, the school tends to take over the, the discussion. But you have to work at trying to limit that, because you still need to hear, but you don't need to have that as the major agenda item. Always meet, because you don't know who you can trust unless you get to know them, and you don't know whether or not the information that you're getting via the media or the rumor is accurate until you talk to somebody who is part of the organization that you're meeting with.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? With that, we will move on to our regular business. Item number ten is a public hearing to consider rezoning, number sixteen dash zero three. Good morning, Scott. I'm gonna let you read all the legal descriptions and everything else.
Sure. Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. And today you have a rezoning request, sixteen dash oh three. This is to rezone tracks one, two, and three of Anson addition in the north half of the southwest quarter of section three, township one oh two north, range forty-nine west. This property is located approximately four miles north of Sioux Falls, about a mile and a half north of Renner. This item has gone before the planning commission. We had a very good discussion back on March twenty-eighth of two thousand sixteen, and the minutes of the planning commission have been included for your review. The planning commission recommended to deny the request. And today, you can uphold the planning commission's decision, or you can overturn the planning commission's decision and recommend approval of the rezoning request. I will go over a couple of slides for you and show you the vicinity of where the request is located. This is the proposed site. It's about eighty-two acres. There is currently a single-family residence and a very large riding arena that's located on the property. It's located on the east side of Highway one fifteen, the major highway that goes to Dell Rapids. And as I indicated, it's about a mile and a half north of Renner. This shows you the eighty-one acres. You can clearly see the, the existing single-family residence and the large riding stable, which is now operating under a conditional use permit. This is a planned development. The applicant is proposing to create a multi-use facility, which will have sort of an ag caveat to it, where they will be plating off or creating about an eighteen, up to eighteen, single-family residences, with those residents having the ability to have access to the horse-riding facility and the, much of the open space. There are three sub-areas, and those are identified. Subarea A is primarily where the single-family residences will be located. Subarea B is where the existing riding arena, stable, and the pasture-riding area is located. And subarea C is the location of two, up to two more residences and some open space. Here you can see the applicant's general proposal of how the property will be laid out. The, you can see the, Subarea A has been, how they are proposing to split that up into residential area. You can see the riding arena, which is Subarea B. And Subarea C, you can see the one existing house. They have indicated they would like to have a, one more, up to one more residence in Subarea C. And then there's a large open area on the east end of Subarea C. This is the primary access into the property. There's an existing driveway that leads to the riding arena, stable, and the residence. And this is taking a shot from basically the Highway one fifteen, looking directly east up, up the access road to the property. This is looking south, basically southwest, and you can see a portion of Highway one fifteen. This, once again, is looking, I'm in the middle of the property, and this is the existing single-family residence that's located sort of on the east portion of the property, of the eighty-one acres. This is the riding arena. This is some of the pasture, the stabling area, the riding area. Once again, this is some of the stabling area. Let me take that, on this photo. You can see to the north, there is an existing shelter belt, and you sort of can see one manufactured home that's located there. There is a, a large manufactured home, or mobile home park, that's located to the north of this, and you can see it on the vicinity map pretty clearly. There's about forty mobile home residences located adjacent to this property. This is looking to the south of that access road. There's a storage area where they keep some corrals. They have some, people store their trailers to move their horses in and out that are being stabled there. This is the large stable. And I have the sizes of the stable in there, if you're interested, but it's a rather large facility. This, here, at this point, I am on the property adjacent to the north. I wanted to give the commission, both the planning commission and the county commission, an idea of the existing residential development that's in the area, and there, as I- And there, as I indicated, there is the large mobile home park that is located adjacent to this property to the north, and you can see approximately a number of residences in the mobile home park. There's about 40 by the number of mailboxes that are actually active there. This is looking straight north up the access road for the mobile home park. And I will go back to whatever map you'd like me to stop at for a discussion, whether that's, you know, one of these maps, but I'll, I'll leave it here, and you can direct me to move at the slides. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Scott at this time? Scott, I just had one. On one of the maps, Section C had ag on it. Is that agriculture?
Yes, they're proposing sort of an ag use for that property, which, you know, they could have cattle, I suppose, in that area if they wanted. It's, it's sort of more of a pasture area, and that area to the east, east of the existing residence is sort of a low area, but I think that if they wanted to have an ag use, like grazing cattle in there, that would be permitted. So what they're proposing is ag, an ag use portion of, of the planned development.
Just one more question. My question is, if it was ag, it wouldn't have any building eligibility on it, because it's already has an existing building eligibility on it.
That's correct, and they are, they are asking to have one more, ability to have one more residence on Subarea C, and I think that they're, I don't, I don't have, well, see if I can get the mouse here working. The, I think that their intent, and you can ask them directly, but I, I think that their intent is to eventually, they have a family member that may want to build, and I think they're looking at the area that's south of that access road to have a residence, but that's, you know, quite a ways in the future for them.
Commissioner Bender?
I was going to follow up on your question about the housing eligibility, so thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a comment?
Yeah, the, the platted lots on that Subarea A are one-acre lots?
They're all exceed one acre.
Okay, and then two, the staff recommended to approve?
Originally, we, the, the recommendation that went to the planning commission was for approval, and this is a large parcel of property. It's 81 acres, and it does, it, it, I think it incorporates a unique use for the county, where you are allowing people to access a lifestyle that would include horse-riding, but maybe not have a huge parcel of property that you need to have, to be able to keep horses on. So it, it may appeal to, to people. It's on a, it's on a paved road. I think it's in an area that is seeing development. There's a lot of development that is occurring to the south around Renner, and actually even to the southeast of this, there's been a lot of building eligibility that have been moved up out of the Big Sioux River, up adjacent to Highway 115, and we're seeing a lot of really nice homes that are being constructed there right now. And granted, that's a little bit different, because those were eligibility that were moved up, and I want to make sure that's clear, and this is rezoning property to a planned development to allow for development of a property into a unique component of residential and ag.
Commissioner Kelly?
Is there only one ingress and egress?
Yes, there is only one.
And that, that, they don't need approval on that, they simply, it's there, they have it, right?
They have it, and they have, have already worked with DOT, and that was in the staff report to the planning commission. The DOT, you, you can see that there is a slight S curve to the north of this, and they have approached DOT. The, the South Dakota Department of Transportation has indicated that they would not allow any additional approaches to this property, however, that the existing approach meets their standards and criterias for site distances. So that would be acceptable to DOT. It was also identified in the staff report that, once they subdivide this property, they will need to pave all of these streets, because it's coming off a paved road, and that would be something that they are going to have to, you know, address when they come in with a preliminary plan or preliminary plat to subdivide this property. So if it goes forth, I have made them aware that they should anticipate having paved, a paved road in the entire subdivision.
Commissioner Kelly?
Is there anything in our, our zoning laws or anything about having that single access point, or is there a density thing that requires more than one?
There is length of cul-de-sacs, and they would, because there's a looped road there, it's, they are, the cul-de-sac actually would only go up to where the, the loop comes off, so they would meet that criteria, and they're also, if you look on where it says subs, the lowest, the, the lower area where it says Subarea C Ag, they are proposing to allow some kind of future access to the south, should that property of the south ever develop. So they are potentially identifying a road network in there.
Additional questions for Scott? Okay, and this is a public hearing, so I would hear from the proponents first, and then we will hear from opponents, and then we'll give the proponents an opportunity to answer any questions that the opponents brought forward.
Morning. My name's Tom Wilkum. I'm here representing the applicant and the landowners, Brad and Laura Wagner. Also with us today is Eric Willardson, the engineer who's been retained for this project. I would, I don't want to repeat things that Scott has said, and certainly he's more knowledgeable of these things than I am, but a couple of additional items that I think are important. The Subarea A is really the only part of this proposed planned development unit where the use will be changed. Subarea C remains essentially as-is, and Subarea B, the stable and the surrounding pasture, remains as-is. The 16 potential lots, which are 1.2 to 1.6 acres each, those are the Subarea A development, the residential lots. It's anticipated that the homes built in that area will be in the range of $300,000 to $400,000. So this planned development unit would generate a substantial amount of, of tax for the county. It's an area that is not going to be used, I mean, if, if this development doesn't happen, it will simply continue to be a stable with a, a pasture. It's not as though it's going to be returned to active agricultural land or, or crop growing or anything like that. And there is, as Scott pointed out, the substantial mobile home park right in the vicinity. Mr. and Mrs. Wagner have talked to all of the parties, the vendors of, of utilities, and they will have cooperation from all them. They've talked to Rural Water, to XL Energy, Crux Gas Company. All of those utility vendors are, are on board with this project. The staff recommendation noted that the project will have to, to submit a final development plan before the building begins. So the county will have another opportunity for review of this project, and if you have any questions for the Wagners or for Eric Willardson, please feel free to ask them.
Is there any questions at this time, point for Tom?
Could you just address the issue of the second housing eligibility in Subarea C for ag that, that was addressed a little bit earlier?
It's, it's my understanding that the entire parcel has two housing eligibility right now, and the request was that a second one be placed in Subarea C in the event that a relative wanted to build there. It's also my understanding from the staff report that if the planned development unit is, is approved, the housing eligibility disappear, that they become not relevant.
I'm Laura, and the plan is...
Could you speak in the microphone, Lyra? Thank you.
Not good at public speaking.
You can put it down, put it down just a little bit.
The plan is that if this goes through and stuff, eventually, there's, that's a beautiful area, it's lower, there's trees, there's a pond back there. I would like to build one more house in my life back there. That's the, I'm the relative, I guess, that I would, I'd like to build one more home there to diet or go to the nursing home from, and that's, that's the one thing that, that's going to be on that piece of property.
So I was wondering why not just put that as part of your Subarea A instead of leaving it ag?
I, because I, I have miniature ponies and some goats that I still want to continue to have, and if I ever have grandchildren that love horses, I probably would still have. I might want to have a horse back there.
But, I mean, you just could, you could carve out a spot and say, this is part of Subarea A.
I guess that's an option. No, no, I don't, I don't understand it. Well, yeah, that's, that's part of the stable area now. We have horses in pasture there that run there. We keep horses on that property. I don't know if that matters.
That's okay, we'll ask Scott later.
Okay.
Additional questions for Mr. Wilkum?
I had one more question. The, so all of this area will be on septic? Is that the, the plan?
Yes.
Okay, additional questions? Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Do either of you want to speak in favor of the project?
Wait, there's some pictures.
Just a minute. If you're speaking in favor of the project, you can come forward.
I also have a letter of a party, Phil Eggers, who's supportive of this project. May I pass that out to the commissioners?
Yep, yep. You can give it to Carol, and she can pass it or Scott, that'd be fine. We have one more gentleman that would like to speak in favor. If you'd give your name and address, please.
My name is Earl Erpolding. I live at 47574 Niner Circle, and I would just like to share with you my experience of living next to a horse barn. I originally built my house in 1978, in which the land that is immediately to the west of my backyard was agriculture. So upon building my house there, I always knew that at some point in time, this land was going to be developed for something other than agriculture. So as time went on, the land was finally sold at auction, and the current owner built a horse barn. So the east side of that plot of land that is now, has a horse barn setting on it, is my backyard, okay? The west side of that plot of land that has the horse barn is now experiencing a development of a rural residential area. I believe the development is called Storm Heights. So anybody that is building a house in Storm Heights now knows they are living next to a horse barn. My experience has been that the horse barn that's on the lot adjacent to my backyard is called Windy Hills. My experience is that Windy Hills has been a good neighbor, okay? And I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I can stand in my backyard or look out my window, and I can see a herd of horses out there in the pasture playing or grazing, and to me, I can't describe it other than this is a Kodak moment, okay? So Cedar Ridge is approximately one and a half miles north of Windy Hills, and if this land was to be opened up for development, anybody that would build on that site would know they are building next to a horse barn. And I don't feel that anybody that wants to build on there should be denied the opportunity for their Kodak moments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak in favor of this project?
Morning. Eric Willardson, Willardson Land Engineering, been working with the Wagners on this project, and Commissioner Bender, I just wanted to respond to that. You asked if, if these residences would be on septic systems, and, and yes, this area is not within the Renner Sewer District, which is about a half mile south of here, but these residences would obviously comply with South Dakota law for, and the statutes that apply to septic systems for a single-family residential development.
Are there any density requirements or anything for, under those statutes?
State of South Dakota requires that the lot size be at least one acre, and to provide for that single-family septic system, and all of these lots are, as I think Scott or Tom indicated, are 1.2 to 1.6 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Is anybody that wants to speak in opposition? Oh, go ahead, yep, let me say one more thing. More than what we saw?
Pictures? Yeah. And I can go through some of the areas. I'm Brad Wagner.
Ma'am Chair, I don't know if, if we need additional pictures.
Yeah, I don't...
Okay. I wanted to highlight some of the housing that's right nearby, but that's all right. And then I could talk about Subarea C. That's ag now, and as we understand it, the zoning should really be contiguous, so if we did the rural residential up there, our idea is to be back in the corner, so we'd have rural residential zoning, then ag, and then if we went with Subarea A again, it would jump. So that's not really as appropriate as, as maybe the zoning ordinances.
Looks like we have your pictures up, pardon me.
Yep.
Oh.
We are contiguous on the west, on the west side of C, aren't you?
On the north side.
Well, the location, if we could get back to that map, the location...
Could you say your name again, just for the record?
Brad Wagner. Well, the map, the plan. Yeah, so there's Subarea C. It would be in that upper right-hand corner, would be cut out for another, another house. And right now, we have two eligibility. We use one, and we have one with the ag land now, so this is really no change. And what we do in that area is we have horses that, that run back there. So really, if we went to the same zoning as Subarea A, we wouldn't be able to run the horses in there. So, and this could be 10 years down the road before we, if I have my way, we'll stay where we're at, but we have a great view where we're at, so. So really, it wouldn't be really appropriate to, to jump another little corner of Subarea A back in that Subarea C, as I read the zoning ordinances.
I thought your wife was talking about that Subarea C on the south. That's, that's not the one you want?
Well, on the south, actually, we, we did allow for maybe a small park, so in, in the corner to this, would be the south, that could be a potential park, and then our house would be to the north, yeah.
So the northeast corner is where you're talking about building?
Yes, yes.
Way up there?
Yeah, way up there.
Next to the, right just south of where the, the trailer park or the...
Yeah, yeah, just right up by there.
Okay.
And then to, that, that southeast corner, we envision a park, if our residents have kids, and a picnic area and, and something like that. Kind of an open space people could use.
There's no comments? Did you have anything else, Bob? Or, excuse me, Brad?
We don't have to go through the pictures. They're awesome pictures.
Okay, we'll go to the opponents. Does someone want to speak in opposition to? Give your name and your address, please.
I'm Mike Cypher, 26443461st Avenue, Hartford. I mainly wanted to come here to explain why, as a planning commission member, I voted against this. Okay, as we look at this, to me, this is a simple issue of density zoning. It's also, in my way of thinking, I, when you look at this, I was actually on the board when we approved this stable for a conditional use. That was, I forget what year it was. Of course, no houses were mentioned at that time, but as you look at these deals, I have to look at it not only as this one, but as I look across the county. This isn't the only horse stable in Minnehaha County, and if you allow this one, then are we going to allow this at the other horse stables around the county? Are they going to be able to say, well, we have a horse stable that's unique, I need 10 eligibility, I need four eligibility, I need six eligibility? And if other things are different, there's other special things, too. I guess they're not going to use the old racetrack at Hartford, so let's, let somebody buy that, build houses around it, they can have their private racetrack. It's not much different, as far as I'm concerned. But as I look at this, this is density zoning, it's not affiliated with a... But as I look at this, this is density zoning. It's not affiliated with a, uh, sanitary sewer district. Uh, they like to refer to the, uh, developments to the north. And I bet, and to me, in this day and age, we would not have approved that development in the north. That was done back in the sixties and the seventies. A lot of this stuff is grandfathered in. But it's surprising how the density in this area has increased just by the utilization of existing eligibility's. We don't need to be generating eligibility's in this area and increasing, you remember, just last year or the year before, right a mile south of this, we were dealing with another housing development and the number one issue was traffic on that highway. And so let's put some more traffic on that highway. And so as a planning commission, I looked at this fundamentally as generating eligibility's. There's not, to me, it's just a horse barn. Yeah, it's a nice one, but there's a lot of nice horse barns around this county. And it's not appropriate to increase the density in this area by granting them fifteen eligibility's. So that's, uh, why I would encourage the commission to look at not only this, but you have to consider it across the county. And, uh, that is why I voted no on this issue when it was before the planning commission. So again, I would request that the commission support the planning commission in denying this petition.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seifer? Commissioner Kelly?
Commissioner Seifer, the, the fact that somebody else might request this later, uh, we make our, you make your decision and we make ours on, on where it is, how it fits into the whole county pattern. It's obvious. I drove out there. It's obvious. There's a lot of building going on out there, single families and, and, and this road with Del Rapids, once they get all the roadwork fixed up there, is, is still gonna continue to be a heavier road. Raven's got an industrial park just a little ways up. And I, I guess I don't see where, I, I, I don't see this as an eligibility. I see this as a development. And, uh, I mean, if it was somebody trying to get one more eligibility, it would look totally different, but it's not. There's gonna be possibility of, of six and a half, seven million dollars worth of housing bill out there, which, uh, I can't remember, I don't know what that would translate into taxes, but it, it's a pretty, it's a beautiful area. And, and I, I guess I agree with the petitioner to the point that I think this is a market that's growing. You see it around. And people are trying to get out of the city and have a rural setting, yet be close enough to be able to work in the city. Your, your objection kind of seems to me to say, we don't wanna grow in the county. And I think that's opposite to what, at least my opinion.
I would not say that, Commissioner Kelly, because we need to grow in the county. That's fine, but let's do it with our existing rules. Uh, and I know there's planned developments are allowed, but however, a planned development should at least be affiliated with a sanitary sewer district. To me, that's key to these whole things. There has to be some control. They're gonna expect the same services in that development as anywhere, any other city. And people tend to move to these areas and they think they're out in the country and they're not. They're just in a town that happens to be spread out a little bit more. And of course, uh, you know, everybody has their own definition of what living in the country is. Mine is if you can throw a rock and hit your neighbor's house, you're not in the country. You're just living in a bunch, amongst a bunch of people. It's the same thing. But I, but this, there's nothing wrong with having developments, developments, and having open space. There's nothing wrong with open space and pastures and farmland. There's nothing wrong with that. This is ag land. That's what it is. And it like, it isn't exactly like where, that's not the city of Sioux Falls sitting a half mile south. It's still, as you look at the map, it's more farmland.
Well, I guess we'll agree to disagree.
Commissioner Bender?
And, and, um, you know, I appreciate you serving on the planning, um, commission. You guys do a lot of very hard work. And I, and I do really appreciate it. I do come at it from a little bit different perspective. I also drove out in that area. And frankly, my family and I have lived in a rural, um, planned development for over twenty years. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And we've been on septic for that long and, um, you know, and I, I do think that that area, when I drove through it, does feel urban fringe, I think is the, the language for it. I mean, there is quite a bit of development on there. And it does appear to be, um, especially as you drive from the south, much more, um, housing feel to it than an, than a true ag feel. As you go further east, I, I agree there's ag. But, I mean, I think that there is always a balance between trying to, um, provide opportunities for agricultural in our, in our county and, and keep the two neighbors, um, working together and not conflicting. But in this area, it seems much more like a housing development area to me. And it also appears to me to be the kind of project where it would be very attractive to people and it, um, that there is a lot of, you know, especially as you go, you know, it's basically Cliff Avenue North. If the DOT has signed off on the traffic issues, um, I agree that we have to think about how, how this, you know, how this plays as a precedent for other situations, but every situation, I think, has to be looked at individually. And here, I, I, I don't think that we're negatively affecting the ag character of the county because that particular area seems primed to me for growth north.
And it can be done through existing eligibility's, not particularly on this part, process. This parcel of land does have another eligibility. If it's eighty acres, it's got two eligibility's. They can add another house. Uh, but I'm still getting back to the fact that our current system, yes, a planned development is fine, but it's still, we're seeing growth in these areas just using eligibility's, transferring them into the corners of sections of land and leaving open, uh, areas. But it's still, it's gonna get into precedence. If you approve this one, you can't say no now to anyone else in the county who has a similar situation like this. I don't think.
I think we can say no.
Well, I, but then go to, Mr. Bennigan always used to bring up, okay, so what's the circuit court? When he was on the planning, he was gonna say about that. Well, you approved it here. The circuit court's gonna say, well, you gotta approve it there too. You can't pick out things. And I'm not a lawyer, but that's what I remember. It was always one of his major concerns when he was on the planning board.
And I, I mean, I do agree, there's, there's a place for precedent, but every situation is gonna be factually distinct. And so someplace that's plopped down in the middle of a rural, completely rural area will be looked at slightly differently than one where there is, you know, clear growth moving up from the south. And it's, you know, in my mind, more of a, a housing area, so. But we can always agree to disagree.
Okay, thank you. But again, like I say, I, that's why, as a planning mis- commissioner, that's why I voted against this. And that's why I think the commission should deny it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Can I just ask what I was handed here?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, I'd, I'd like to.
I think we'll take this, um, wh- can we just have a rebuttal from the other side and then we'll come back to the commission and we'll address this?
I made copies for my part coming up.
Um, is there anything that you wanna say again on the proponent side before we have discussion amongst the county commissioners? And maybe additional questions?
Yes, very briefly, when, when we talk about the concept of precedent, it's something I've spent my life, uh, dealing with. And I don't think that by approving this, you set a precedent that binds you with respect to any other application. And what a circuit court would look at is the legal requirement for the circuit court to give a great deal of deference to the exercise of discretion by the county commission. And no two situations are going to be exactly alike. So, uh, I can't imagine a circuit judge saying, well, you granted it in this sin- instance, you have to do it in the next one because they're not going to be alike. And you do have a substantial amount of discretion in the, these kinds of decisions. And it's discretion that a court gives a great deal of deference to. The, the DOT has, uh, reviewed the increase in the, the traffic, uh, density and still has no objection.
Thank you. All right. Um, with that, we will go to the commission discussion and questions. So Commissioner Barth, you have.
Madam Chair, I, I, I hope to have it on the computer, but apparently it didn't quite.
Can I have a comment from, from our legal staff or not? No, okay.
I just wondered what it was. Okay. Well, basically, uh, the one that shows Wall Lake here, right? This was a, a decision from some years ago, which in many ways is very similar because what we had is a existing, pretty dense, uh, zoned area along Wall Lake. And the applicant bought a property that had like fifteen feet of shoreline. And they wanted to build a, uh, a small subdivision with some, uh, fancy schmancy buildings on it. The, uh, it never happened because it was like two thousand and seven, they applied, and two thousand and eight, the economy went the wrong way. And, uh, it actually did wind up going to court and the court ruled in the favor of the county commission. Let me also say that our, our chairperson of the, of the planning commission is, is certainly a ferocious fighter in favor of, of the letter of our ordinance and stuff. And, you know, certainly we need him on our planning commission as an advocate. I see this subdivision next to that old trailer park as being very similar to this Walls, Wall Lake situation. We would not allow, uh, that trailer park to come in and take a pristine acreage and make it into a, a trailer park. And we would certainly not allow, uh, fragments of acres along Wall Lake to become lots, uh, for building on these days. However, it, it does exist. And in, in the sense that this is contiguous, uh, to that, uh, that mobile home operation, I, I really feel that it's, uh, uh, it's entirely consistent with, with the, uh, character of that neighborhood. So secondarily, uh, there's the, uh, addition just north of Renner Corner, uh, that Mr. Sadat brought us a couple of years ago. And, um, the, uh, we approved it. It's, I don't believe it's been constructed yet. But it's, it also was contiguous with other development. And I know that, uh, you know, Mr. Sorum, uh, was opposed to it. But since then, he's added, uh, lots to his subdivision and included a commercial building on the southwest corner of, uh, Renner Corner. Anyway, I do believe that, uh, our planning chairperson is correct. But I also think that, uh, as has been argued in the past, that, you know, that it's, it's, uh, it's, it's possible to modify these things. It's, uh, it's possible to allow some, uh, some action in this area. And I, I recommend, uh, supporting this, um, this subdivision. I, I think, and again, that whole road is going to be eventually packed with, uh, houses and restaurants and, uh, this is just another step in that direction, I'm afraid.
Additional questions? Um, I'm not quite done with this discussion unless, I just have another question.
We'll get into discussion after the motion.
You wanna have a motion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move to approve the Cedar Ridge Plan Development District.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Additional conversation. Scott?
I, I would hope that the motion would include, there was a whole set of criteria that, uh.
Including the, yes.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna make sure that this.
Can you put conditions on the?
Well, there's a.
Plan development?
With the plan development, you have, uh, development criteria and those are spelled out for you there. They, they're sub area regulations, exactly. Thank you. Um, and I included those for you. They're a part of the, uh, the ordinance that was, uh, sent to Cindy, but you should have them in your drop box to look at.
And that does include the, uh, recommendations of the planning staff?
I, I'm not done asking questions either, Gene, so you go right ahead.
I, I was wondering if you could comment on the whole issue of the second housing eligibility and the placement in the ag property and.
Well, the, uh, maybe the better way to, to approach this is by explaining why we really wouldn't want to expand the, the rural residential, to include an additional lot for them to build on. If you, the applicants, the Wagners have indicated that they would like to have horses on there. And horses, livestock is not allowed in that, in that R one district or that, similar to that. So if we expanded that and they built a house, they would not be able to have horses on that. And that's one of the things they indicated. And so, uh, I think that explains what, what their intent was. And did, what was, uh, what was your question on the building eligibility? What happens to it or?
Well, I'm, I'm curious, I guess, and I was looking for it in your report, it seemed to me like I read somewhere that, um, that there are other situations where there's been a planned development. The planned development eliminates any housing eligibility's
That's correct.
that have been on that property. And so that, in the past, have we been willing to move a housing eligibility similar to, to? In my mind, what is being done here is that we're moving a housing eligibility from the, or we're, or we're retaining a housing eligibility in a planned development that would otherwise go away?
It's not really, I think we need to, uh, not look at it from the point of retaining or eliminating eligibility. But what you're basically doing is creating a whole new district, a planning, a planned development district. And those uses, all the uses are gonna be outlined in there, uh, what, what is allowed. And it is clear, it's been clearly stated that sub area A, for example, uh, is allowed to have the sixteen residentials, si- building sites. Sub area C is allowed to have up to two residential building sites. And then they, there's some, there's some, uh, there's ability to be flexible on where the, where you put those. But that's why we have a final development plan. So they, they come in, they bring, and they show us, this is our final development plan. This is where we wanna put that eventually. And so when they, when they do get ready to place that second home in sub area C, they will have to come in with a final development plan. We review it. And, but there are no more building eligibility's. Those are all gonna be eliminated. One, if this should be approved, those are eliminated, they're gone. There's no more building eligibility's that they can transfer around. Now they have to follow the criteria, this, this, the guidelines of the planned development.
I, I think I'm confused, but Commissioner Kelly?
I'm totally confused. The, the eligibility's are on the eighty acres.
That's correct.
And, and they're taking two-thirds of the eighty acres, making it into a rural residential or less than that, uh, area B and area A. The, the two eligibility's are still there and our ordinances don't specify where on the eighty acres you have to place that eligibility, correct?
That's not correct.
Kirsten?
But here, here's what's basically happening. The criteria that they're setting out in the plan of the, plan development dictates where and in what amount the homes can be. The building eligibility's for whatever's on that parcel that's involved in the planned development now is gone. So in other words, if they brought you a proposal that said, there's four in sub area C, I mean, it, the logic that they're doing i- is that while there were two before, but really, it doesn't really matter. It matters what the, the criteria in the planned development, uh, areas has set out in what's going to be adopted or rejected today is.
That's correct.
And the eligibility is not included in this.
It's gone.
What we, we.
It's, they're gone.
That was just an add-on they asked for. Is that correct?
It's, it's just.
That is not in the, not in the planned development.
That's, well, it's in the planned development that they want to, they want the ability to build two houses in sub area C. That, that's really the, the crux of what they want, is two, the ability to have two single family residences in sub area C.
And one's already there.
One's already there.
And that's, and that's in the motion that was just made, that those two homes could be put in that area. I have another question. So if the planned development was just planned for a, areas A and B and C was left agricultural and not a part of the planned district, how many acres are left in that? And could they have just moved the eligibility over to section C, left it as, and not made that the planned development?
Um, I suppose they could. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look, uh, the, the, the house sits on a, there's three, actually three tracks there. And the tract, the tract, uh, let me get my. There, there's three tracks that comprise a total of eighty acres. The house sits on one tract, uh, tract three, and that has an, an eligibility. Tract one, which is where the, uh, I believe where the s- stable sits, tract one, that has no building eligibility. So they, they're sort of long tracks. I suppose they could have, but in, if they were gonna start doing that, then I probably would not have recommended originally approval. I think that you need to take, look at the entire eighty acre parcel and come up with a, a overall plan for the, for the area, for the entire eighty acres. Not just say, well, I want this little section here. Because I think that it gives us some security that they have a plan for the overall development.
Okay, so I have one more question about that whole thing. So if they decided that they wanted, um, expand sub area A all the way across the map where it says sub area C and just a great big huge long line across there, and then never sell it to anybody else, they could do that. It would, then they would have one more lot that was great big huge in that corner. big huge in that corner? And then leave the rest agricultural C? Do you see what I'm saying? If you just draw a line right across the top of SubArea and go all the way to the end of the property? And then just make that last corner and one great big huge lot? I think that's where you wanted to build, wasn't it, Laura?
Well, we're just SubArea C, A, from the top.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you just, if you just drew a line all the way across there and made that one great big huge lot?
You could, as long as it's still within the SubArea C, it's...
Well, it's still the A then, or?
No, then it wouldn't be A.
The SubArea C would still be A. I mean, they still could do that if they wanted to have one big lot across the top. Yep. They could still do that. They could actually then, they could eventually, you know, bring, subdivide this with a final development plan across the top for, for that other house that they want to put in there.
That could be many years.
Many years.
Yeah. You have to come to the microphone, Laura, or you have to have Scott speak for you because...
That could be many years, I mean, if, if it would even happen, but that, and that is one of the favorite areas where the horses like to go and eat. So I kind of hate to eliminate it for the next 10 years, to put horses there, because 10 years from now, I might want to put, I might put a house there. This, if it would work the other way, I think it might be, I don't, I don't think it's going to work the other way. That's why I'm just looking for options.
Okay. Additional questions for Scott?
I'm wondering, Commissioner Hypergrew, if you could explain what your real area, your real concern is here.
Well, what I was looking at is that, the motion that we have right now says SubArea C, that we're going to allow two building eligibility's in agricultural zoned area. And my understanding from Scott is that that is not permissible, because we're eliminating the extra building eligibility once we've made a subdivision. And so by, if we do that, that's why I was trying to find a different alternative, because if we do it the way it's written here, we've actually created a building eligibility in an agricultural area, Scott? No? That's why I'm still confused.
No, if you look at the, if you look at the criteria under SubArea C that I provided you, what, where it says SubArea C, and then it says use is permitted, it just says a maximum of two single-family dwellings. They're not, they're not called eligibility's. They're just, they're called single-family dwelling units.
So you can legally do that? Because I thought you just said we couldn't.
No, you, you can. I mean, you're, you're eliminating, they're not called eligibility's. You're just giving the right to have a house on the property, which is different than an eligibility, but they, it's, it's written properly, so it does allow them in SubArea C to have two houses.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just was gonna, because I think I created the confusion, so I was just going to try to restate. So really, all we're doing is, we're not talking about eligibility's, we're talking about a plan development, we're starting from scratch. We look at this as is, and, and your staff has, has looked through this whole proposal and feels comfortable still recommending approval.
Yes, and we, and I've prepared criteria for each subarea that, that the owners will have to follow. That's the guideline on how this is going to be developed.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly, did you have additional comment?
Well, Gene pretty well asked it, but I think if we're, if we're going into commission discussion, I'd just like to make some comments there. I really feel, we not only have to protect the agricultural nature of this county, but we also have to provide for development. And I think, I don't, I don't subscribe to the, to the, it might happen somewhere else theory, because I think that's why you have elected boards to decide when and where things should go, and whether they fit in. If this was out in Buffalo County, or Township or something, why, probably be a whole different thing. But this is a, this area is really developing, and I, and I, I think the concept, it's, it's a little bit new, but, but I think the concept of having people like horses, but there's only a limited place where you can put them, and if they can live and be on this thing, and everybody around here's going to be horsey people, you aren't going to have somebody that didn't want the smells and the noises of horses. I think this is a very good plan, and I think it's an exciting possibility. There's a lot of land out there that's going to be developed down the road on 115, along 115. That's a state highway, it's capable of handling traffic, and I, I would encourage the commission to, to approve the motion.
Additional comments, questions? Commissioner Bennigan?
I just want to clarify a couple of things, and I don't remember the conversation from way back when about what my comments were when I was on the Planning Department, when we talked about issues that I thought were similar, then I said that we couldn't be arbitrary and capricious, which I think is something that we had been approached with multiple times. I think every plan development is different. It's unique in the situation and what it's next to and what it's around. I don't see this as quote tillable land by any stretch. I think it is a develop all kinds of program, especially since it's right next to a developed trailer court, if you will. I don't think we can compare this plan development to something like a Houston Two or whatever it could possibly be, because those are two different neighborhoods from my perspective. So I think when there's as much thought and process that's gone through to access the traffic patterns, because if the state feels like now it is a permissible improvement, and we have the paved road, the septic tanks, and the, all the water and utilities taken care of, I don't see any reason not to do this. The plan development, as I understand it, has some restrictions, but there is certainly not anything that they're violating in this construction process, so I'm going to support it.
Any additional comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the condition set forth by the Planning Department. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider application of special events on sale wine retailers license and special events off-sale packaging wine licenses from the Sioux Land Renaissance Association for the Renaissance Festival on June 11 and 12, 2016, at the W.H. Lyons Fairgrounds.
Good morning, and how be the lords and ladies of the commission?
We're good.
I understand that your mistress Jepson put me here to lighten the mood. I am again in front of you requesting the opportunity to sell wine at our festival, and our festival is June 11th and 12th, out at your fair fairgrounds.
Any questions on the Renaissance Festival?
What does it cost to go to the festival?
The festival cost is $10, but we do have dollar-off coupons in the Sioux Falls Shopping News.
Dollar-off wine or dollar-off...
No, no, the wine is totally separate from the entrance ticket. We are family-friendly, but not that family family.
Is there a motion?
There is.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good mercy.
Item number 12 is consider a motion to approve the chair to sign a fellowship agreement with the Gideon's Promise Law School Partnership Project. Tracy Smith, good morning.
Good morning. Tracy Smith, Director for the Public Defender's Office. We are seeking authorization to, once again, enter into a contract with Gideon's Promise through the Law School Partnership Project. This time, the law school would be Hofstra University. It would be a commitment for one year, where Hofstra, Hofstra has agreed to commit $43,000 towards the annual salary for one student. Gideon's Promise would provide public defender education and training for three years. We have identified a third-year law student who has signed up to take the South Dakota Bar Exam in July, and her name is Lisa Capalupo. She has come to Sioux Falls and visited the Sioux Falls area. She also spent her spring break in New Orleans, helping out the Public Defender's Office there, because they are short-staffed with public defenders in that area. So I believe she would fit in our office very well. This would be a significant cost savings to the county. This program has been a significant savings to our office with the Gideon's Promise lawyer that we had last year. Her commitment is up in July. She applied for an opening that was in our office, and once her commitment is up, she will be starting in our office as a new attorney for one of our positions that we have. Having these fellows in our office, they do the same work as our traditional lawyers, even though they aren't positions that the county has to pay the full salary, and they aren't identified as positions with our office. They do still serve and provide the same representation as all of our other lawyers and do the same duties. They carry a full caseload as our other lawyers do. So we would ask that you approve and authorize us to continue our participation in this program, and authorize us to sign the contract that I believe you have a copy of, so that we can continue using these fellows.
Questions? Commissioner Bender?
So Tracy, I mean, I'm, I'm really thrilled to hear that it worked well for you this last year. I know we worked hard on coming up with a model that was going to be workable for the county. And, but I just want to clarify, so if we approve this position, and it appears that Hofstra has come forward with a pretty significant financial contribution, which is greatly appreciated, but the position is not guaranteed for longer than a year. All we're, all we're approving is one year, and then if there are openings in your office that, that she could apply for those positions as well. I know there's some language in there about, you know, the idea that, that Gideon's would like this to be a three-year program. And we would like it to work out long-term as well, as long as there's openings and approved positions, but there's no guarantee under the contract. Is that your understanding?
Correct. We have language in the contract with the understanding that South Dakota is an at-will state. She is approved for education and training for three years. If she were to decide that she didn't want to stay with our office, she is free after the year to go wherever she wanted to go, but she would still have that benefit by participating in this program of having the three years of education and training through Gideon's Promise as well. She doesn't have a commitment either. But if she were to decide to stay with our office, you know, and reapply for a position once that becomes available, then she would still be able to participate in the three-year program. We're not binding the commission to keep her on after the year.
Commissioner Kelly?
Oh, I guess maybe that was my question. The, the one we've got in there now is a one-year deal, is that right?
Yes.
What's the three-year Gideon's deal?
Gideon's has agreed to authorize her to remain in the three-year core 101 program that they have, to continue her education and training.
However, she will be paid as another, when she moves from her slot to the, to the vacant slot, she will be as every other public defender, is that correct?
Correct. We have other attorneys in our, our office, full-time attorneys, who weren't participants in the Law School Partnership Project, who through our education and training budget, are participants in this three-year program.
And she will not have, we will not pay for that with, with this candidate?
Right. That's the, another added benefit of this is we're saving on our education and training budget.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Just make a motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Item number three is consider a bid award for project MC 467 BR-16, a replacement of structure 50-103-23 located near 26650, 467th Avenue. Opening bids were opened on April 20, 2016. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Reeves, project engineer at the Highway Department. Couple of projects this morning that were bid last week. The first one here is a structure on 467th Avenue, which is about, which is a mile east of Highway 17, and it's just off of 41st Street. This project was bid on Wednesday, as discussed in the, in the memo. We had two alternates for the project, one for a pre-cast, which is cast at a plant and then hauled out there and placed by the contractor, and then cast in place, which is a poured-in-place structure. As you can see on the bid tabulation, the Midwest Contracting was the low with the alternate two, which is the pre-cast, at $190,025, which is about $60,000 less than the final engineer's estimate. So we're here this morning to ask for approval of the contract.
Okay. Question, Commissioner Bender?
Jason, can you just explain the difference between the two alternates and, and why you bid them out separately? And really what I'm looking at, is there any structural soundness considerations? I mean, are they just basically apples to apples?
There's benefits to both, in my opinion, I guess. The benefit of the pre-cast, which is the version that we have for the approval, is in the sections, there's, there's obviously more contractors in the area that can do it than the poured-in-place, and it goes, it goes a lot quicker. They go out, they, they excavate the hole, they set the, the box in place, they bury it, they, they stabilize it, and away they go. And I think the, I think the completion date for this, we had two separate ones based on the alternate, is about a three-week, three-week construction. The other one was more in the six-week range. With the, the benefit, in my opinion, I guess, to the alternate one, which is the poured-in-place, you don't end up with the joints in between the, the sections. It's all poured in one solid mass, and, and then it's backfilled and stabilized, and the road's put back in place. But as far as the pre-cast goes, if it's installed properly, everything's tied together, everything's backfilled properly, we're, we're still talking about a structure that'll last well over 50 years, probably closer to 75. And I would say that cast-in-place is in that, in that neighborhood too, but maybe even longer. So, like I said, there's a couple of benefits in both. The reason that we did the two alternates with this is because when we get into a, these, I would consider this a smaller box culvert, a dual cell, 12-foot wide, six-foot tall, two sections. The pre-cast suppliers and installers can be a lot more competitive, as you can see on the bid tabulation. In our, what we've found in the recent years, if, with the poured-in-place structure, we have very good concrete contractors around here that can pour those in place for a really good value. And when they get large, like the two that we've done the last two years, one was just east of the Del Rapids High School, and the other one was just northwest of Crooks. Those two are really large structures. One of them was bid similar to the, to this, and the poured-in-place option, it was way lower than the pre-cast. So it tells us, in my opinion, I guess, is that when we get into large structures and you pour them in place, the, the poured-in-place contractors in the Sioux Falls area are, are much more competitive than our pre-cast people. But like I said, when we get into these smaller structures, the pre-cast are able to compete, and that was what we did here. I will also mention a little, if we, if we do this as such with the two alternates, it does cost us a little bit more with our consultant and design fees, somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $7,000. So, and, you know, in something like this, I think it's well worth the money, and it, it shows on our bid tabulation. So I think we got a really good, really good price. And I, I do believe that we will still get a very, very good product with the pre-cast.
Okay. Additional questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a bid award for project MC, MC Crack Seal, 2016, installation of crack seal materials on approximately 43 miles of county highways. Bids were opened on April 20. Jason, again.
Good morning again. This is our annual crack seal bid program. This year, we have 43 miles, and this is just a, it's a pavement preservation, to seal cracks, keep the water out, to keep our subgrade good, and try not to get that saturated, which causes roads to fail. And we got two bidders on this. Highway Improvements is a, is a local contractor and typically has gotten ours in the past, but we do still bid this competitively as we have to, based on the contract amount. $245,810 was their bid. Final engineer's estimate was about $25,000 more than that, so we saved a little bit of money, and we're asking for approval of this contract also.
Motion to approve.
A second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is motion, consider a motion to approve the purchase of weed control chemicals in the amount of $12,640.20 for the Mini-Hack... in the amount of $12,640.20 for the Minnehaw County Weed Control Department from contract number 16917, competitive bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Ralph Hammer, good morning.
Good morning, Ralph Hammer, weed supervisor. This is a little different chemical, a little more specialized chemical than we've normally used. This is going to do bare ground work around guardrails, so they don't have to spend so much time with weed whackers in the fall trying to keep the snow from piling up on the road. And also, there's a chemical in there that they're gonna use, that we're gonna use to control brushin' trees in the right of way.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
I have a question for him though. Ralph, have you heard any concerns by, from the city or others about mosquitoes?
Not a lot. There has been some talk about it. I assume the city is still going to spend several million dollars controlling mosquitoes. That, as far as the countywide, I, I don't hear anything.
Okay.
It, it gets really expensive to do.
I know that, and I just was wondering if you'd heard any worries.
Yeah, 10 years ago, it was gonna cost a quarter million dollars to control mosquitoes, and that was a little more budget than the county wanted to put out at the time, so.
Thanks Ralph.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is to consider a resolution to authorize the treasurer to issue a quick claim deed on tax deed number 2591.
Good morning, Commissioner Boblitz from the Auditor's Office, and I wanted to bring forward to your consideration a resolution for the transfer of tax deed number 2591, RDID 84476, to the adjacent property owner as recommended by the Tax Deed Appraisal Board. I've included a copy of the appraisal board report for your review. The Audit, the Auditor's Office tried to give the parcel of the land to the adjacent landowner last year, but the offer was not accepted at that time. The property is two foot wide and 102 foot in length. The action that I'm asking today is for you to approve the resolution for the transfer of this property to the adjacent landowner, Steve R. Knotts, 1909 South Lindell Avenue in Sioux Falls. The resolution also authorizes the county treasurer to issue a quick claim deed, and authorizes the county auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interests, and penalties levied against this property. I stand by for questions.
I didn't read all of what was on the, on this part, and you didn't read it either, so I will just say this is Lot 8, except for the south 58 feet of Block 3 in the Hayward Heights addition in the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaw County, to adjacent landowner and authorize the county auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties. Commissioner Bender, did you have a question?
I just was curious how you managed to twist his arm to take it this year.
Well, you know, as a set of curious circumstance, last year, he had, about the time of our, our sale, he had built a wall on this property unaware that the county actually owned it. And they had a torrential rain that came down to wipe the wall out. And then a week later, I'm trying to give him this two-foot piece of property, and so he was a little guarded and, but I guess with time, he's realized that it was circumstance and not necessarily a conspiracy, so. Motion to approve, but I have a comment, I guess.
A motion? Motion and a second, Commissioner Barth?
You know, I think we occasionally see subdivisions and stuff come in where they have drainage lots and, you know, we, we should do everything we can not to allow little weird things like two-foot wide and 102 feet long. I mean, I'm not sure I could, you know, ride a bicycle without my elbows overlapping my neighbor's property. I mean, no one is gonna pay taxes on something like that, nobody wants it. You could put like one row of corn or something. Anyway, I would, just, let's try to keep that from happening.
Well, and, and I would, I would agree with you. It's not much good for anything unless you want to grow spaghetti farm. But, you know, much to Kyle's credit upstairs there, I think that he has found a lot of these things, and, and in most cases, I can look back and see the title company had made a mistake back when this was plotted out. And so I think that the fact that Mr. Hellset is clearing these up is to benefit for the county. If you approve this today, I'll have to get Mr. Knotts down here and combine the tax deed parcels together up in equalization, and then we'll get it back on the tax rolls.
Is there a motion?
There was.
Oh, I have a motion and a second already, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the 2017 Highway Safety Grant Program. You waited a long time.
I sat in overflow for a little while, so I was a little more relaxed. Kristin Trano with the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office, and I'm coming to you with a fairly routine request. I typically ask this every spring. We would like to request to apply for the 2017 Highway Safety Grant. It is a grant that allows us overtime wages as well as some equipment purchases in order to better control traffic, and a lot of our enforcement is gonna be regarding speeding, seat belts, and impaired driving.
Okay, any questions for Kristin?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a comment also.
Second, did you have a comment Jeff?
Yeah. This is another example, though, where we get a grant to find a way to put more people in our jail, but we don't have the grant to hold them in jail, to prosecute them, to defend them. And, anyway, that's my comment.
I have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item number 18 is Minnehaw County Liaison Report, reports, are there any reports? Commissioner Bender?
I'd just like to report that I am the liaison to the sheriff's department, and to segue off of Commissioner Barth's comment, there hasn't been a lot of public comment or discussion about the jail project recently, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been work that's been going on. We, we have been meeting regularly, we've put together a master list of all the studies that have been done. We're working on getting some final operating cost numbers together this week, and we hope to have a special building committee set up just to talk about issues related to the jail and to bring us all back up to date where we are on various issues we've talked about to date, and where we still need to go to, to try to move this project forward. So I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that there was work going on, and, you know, hopefully relatively soon, we'll be able to gather together and, and look at all of that again and try to keep this going.
Okay, additional comments? Is there any new business? Any old business? We have some old business.
From the Auditor's Office, I thought that I, I wanted to make a couple of comments on some of the business that we had this morning here. Commissioner Barth pointed out that we had $203,000 in, in an account that was property tax, and indeed, it is property tax, but I wanted to explain a little bit more that it is advanced property tax money that the treasurer takes in and collects and pays out when the timing is appropriate. There are some folks who pay in that money because they, they kind of use us, for lack of a better word, as kind of an escrow account. And then the other part of that account would also be mobile homes that get sold that are required to have the taxes paid up into 17. That is that money that we were talking about today. And we are looking at a different way of doing this besides writing the treasurer a check to put back in an account, and we think that we'll, we'll find a way. It's, it's kind of a bookkeeping, it's a paper trail, but we think we can do a better way so it doesn't appear to be untoward in any way. One of the other things that I, I did want to mention was, you know, in my office, we made a mistake on the, on the issuing of the lien towards the, the provider, the medical care provider. In my employee's defense, the lady who was leaned on, she owns a business, she runs it out of her home. It didn't have a name on it, so she has her name for her business. The assumption was made in my office that that was indeed a person that, you know, they could put the lien on. So we've, it was lamentable, and we've taken care to not operate on assumptions anymore. And Mr. Kelly, if you'd like that apology, a letter of apology written to that person, we, my office would be glad to do that. We caught it well ahead of a real estate deal, so I don't think there's any damage done, but nonetheless, that person was wronged, and my office will make that correct if used so deep.
Ron, I think that's your decision, but as an elected official, but...
Very good, okay, thank you, I just wanted to clear those things up.
No executive session today, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned. There's nobody here to hear the gavel.